Press and public have been duly notified. I'd like to ask everybody to stand for an invocation, a pledge of allegiance. Let us bow our heads. Dear Lord, we stand with you this evening before Memorial Day. We ask that you remember all those that came before us, our families, our friends, and all those that served our country so that we may live in liberty on this wonderful island. Please guide all those that visit us this weekend so that they may enjoy our beaches and waterways and return safely to their homes. Also, in our prayers, are the men and women who served this nation and all the corners of the world, please watch over them and protect them. For it is in your name we pray. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Marie, please call the roll.
Councilmember Burger, Councilmember Tally.
Here.
Councilmember Chen.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yeah.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Present.
Councilmember Trump.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Tomlin.
Present.
Ms. President Tucker.
Here.
Attorney General Alvin.
All right, moving on. Thank you all for coming. We have the reading of the Journal of the previous meetings. In your packet you have the regular minutes from April 24th and the public hearing of May 15th. We have a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Any discussion, actions, additions? None heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none heard. Thank you. Moving on, now we're up to citizen comments. First item we have scheduled here in the citizen comment is a request for the city to sponsor a volleyball tournament at the Windjammer. And to present the issue here, Horace, Bobby? Just stand at the mic and let us know what you're trying to do.
What I'm trying to do is basically there's a volleyball tournament that would like to come to Isle of Palms. I've been coming for quite a while and they generally work out at the Windjammer but they do put courts on the beach. And what I need is basically permission to put courts on the beach and to allow them to hold their tournament. It'll take place on June 9th, Saturday the 9th, and Sunday the 10th. The men's tournament will take place on the 9th and the women's and juniors tournament and coed, which is usually smaller, on Sunday the 10th. But juniors has gotten a lot bigger over the years as we're learning.
As we know.
And I'm not really sure what else I need to ask. The courts will be on the... The size of the courts are 60 foot long by 30 foot wide so they would be as close to the primary dune as possible without going into dunes. And 15 courts, we have three on the beach already at the Windjammer. It takes about probably 100 foot per court by the time you put the court in there and the space in between. So we're talking about about half the length of a football field. Now, in the past, there's one business that has requested us not to put courts behind their business so, you know, we respect that. And, you know, if anybody has a complaint about that, we'd be glad to move it. We're not trying to make any enemies. And this tournament's become an Isle of Palms since the 90s and they would like to have a good rapport and keep coming.
And you're going to provide insurance for the city?
We will. I've got a copy of... Of course, it's not this insurance, but this is a Myrtle Beach... One that they do in Myrtle Beach.
Well, you'll satisfy our needs.
Yes, yes. Insurance will be provided. And y'all, I guess I would give a copy to Linda whenever... Oh, there you are.
Right.
In the middle, I forgot. Whenever, you know, it gets approval.
One thing that was raised recently by a member from a citizen who didn't have a good experience on the island is they felt they had been overrun by volleyball nets being put up, et cetera. So my hope is you put them up early and position them well before anybody else.
The nets, what they do, this is a well-run professional tournament that's been going on for quite some time. Actually, they will put the nets up for Friday... For Saturday and Sunday play, they will put the nets up on Friday. And these guys at the crack of dawn there at the Windjammer signing up and getting ready to go play, before I'm out of bed and going, they've got, you know, they've got a half a days of play or workout of them or whatever. So, you know, nobody will be run off of the beach. It's just everything will be there and going on by the time any of the tourists arrive.
Would we have a problem if you put them up on Friday night on the beach? You'd be leaving them there.
They would be.
We have a problem with that?
We've made recommendations with... Or we made Arizona for this area that we've allowed it.
And I think one of the things, Mr. Mayor, one of the things we talked about in the Public Safety Committee is the fire chief asked that reflective tape be put on the poles.
I'll put all those around. I've actually, I've got some at the Windjammer and I neglected to go down and put the ones on the... But I'm halfway there.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
This is not a one-time request. This is for an annual sponsorship, if you will, as a city event, if I'm not mistaken.
Right now, this is, you know...
It's a single request.
This is a single request. We'll experience this. If it works well, we'll entertain.
Right.
If he has a tournament later in the summer, you'll have to come forward and make another request. You know, it may eventually become a... On the dock of every year, we approve it early in the year for... But let's experience it first. Is that answered?
Yeah, it's not annual. I mean, it's annual, but the way I've understood it's every time I do something, I need to come get approval.
Jimmy?
Bobby, besides that one business, everybody else you've talked to, they encourage it?
Well, you know, it brings... This is, like I said, a professional-run tournament that goes all the way down to East Coast and a lot of the cities. And it brings a lot of the players out. And it's probably, you know, 150 teams come to this. And it supports the island business and, you know, both the motels and the businesses over here. And, you know, these guys that play volleyball, they're not really, you know, they're not out... I mean, they're there on, like I said, sunrise Saturday morning. They're not out late in my establishment, if that's what you mean. You know, if they get eliminated, they might be out late Saturday night. But Friday night, they're... I don't get any money.
The family, spectators, people comes, they have money.
Yeah, it's a spectator sport. And I don't know if anybody's ever seen the finals. Usually take place at the Windjammer around dark on Saturday for the men's. It's kind of a stadium atmosphere.
Thank you. Now, I suppose, could we even sign up? I mean...
Sign up? I mean, you'd probably leave early, but you could sign up.
Have you seen him play volleyball?
Well, I said, he could leave early.
We can pick up after everybody.
Right. He would be the one in the establishment that leaves early.
All right. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the... We approve the volleyball tournament on June 9th and 10th at the Windjammer as a city-sponsored event contingent upon the organizers having the appropriate insurance and other requirements of the city.
Motion seconded. Any discussion?
Shouldn't this be under new bills or new resolutions? Just point of order?
It's just a motion.
Just a motion.
It's just a motion for... There's not a...
We can do it here or we can do it...
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It was seconded by Michael. No opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good luck. I'm assuming it's just the tides.
Yeah, the tides are always an issue.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Still in citizens' comments, anybody else wish to address council? Going, going, gone. All right, let's move on to reports. Reports from standing committees. First up, Ways and Means. We met at 5:45 on Tuesday the 15th. We had a report from our treasurer. Our April financial statements, both our revenue and expenditures are 75% of budget whereas the target for 10 months is 84%, which means our expenses are in line. And our revenue is behind where we'd like it to be simply because the property tax revenue continues to lag from prior year collections, but the treasurer expressed confidence that the budget would be met. All city departments are below budget through April and the general fund cash balance on hand is 31% of our annual expenses, which is well right where we want it to be, over 30%. Our tourism activities and municipal accommodations tax continues to log on and we're, year to date, we're 12% ahead of FY 11. Our state accommodations tax, we received for the quarter 36, a little over $36,000. The prior quarter of the same year, same period last year was $32,000. So our fund continues to grow. We're 30% ahead of the prior year. Our hospitality tax, year to date is running 7% ahead of prior year. And last month, we recorded 50,000, almost $50,000 in income from hospitality tax. Our projects were reviewed. Our beach restoration project, the actual work has been completed. We have a fund balance from the beach restoration activities still on hand, roughly $400,000, although the projects are not complete simply because the projects have not been... Final reports have not been approved by the permitting agencies, et cetera, and that may require additional expenses if they so deem it necessary. But the projects, the most recent project was executed well and there's still monies left in the fund. Our dredging work has been complete. We finished the activities and repaired the tidal wave dock and it's now back in use. And we reviewed the 53rd to 57th Avenue drainage project. The only activity there is the notification that Wild Dunes is going to require the movement of the drainage through their property. And the easement will be converted from... Well, it'll be a permanent easement when we're done. It's going to cost that project $75,874 in order to make that relocation of the line so that they can put in their pool. That was the end of our projects review. We then went into the capital and operating budgets review. We went through a whole series of items, adding and discussing. We removed the beach walkover from FY 13 budgeting. We removed some... Let me get through some pages here. Some other items such as Christmas displays, special advertising and event planners, et cetera, that all affected our state accommodations tax and municipal accommodations tax. And under new business, we considered a recommendation from Real Property Committee to develop an RFP related to the municipal parking lot. And so staff has now been tasked with the requirement to come up with an RFP, documents that we can advertise the leasing of that space. We concluded... Oh, excuse me. And set our next meeting to be at 5:45 on Tuesday, June 19th, year 2012. Any questions for Ways and Means? All right, moving on, public safety, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met at 5 o'clock Thursday, May 3rd. We discussed the volleyball tournament, which we just acted upon. We also are continuing to discuss beach access parking. And it's... I can assure you with what we're looking at, it's a work in progress. There are state laws that we need to examine with a fine-tooth comb before we do anything to make it effective. We did act on relocating three emergency call boxes. We'll move one to Fire Station 2, one to Public Safety Building, and one to the Recreation Center. We talked about the CTC funding requests. Our number one choice was drainage from 42nd to 52nd avenues. Number two, multi-use path from the base of the connector through the Palm Boulevard intersection. And a multi-use path on Palm from 41st to 57th was our third choice. There was a request for a speed study or enforcement on Hartnett Boulevard between 29th and 30th Avenue. And the chief indicated because the street was so short that he would personally talk to the person that had sent the request and find out exactly what's going on there. Highlights of... Some of the highlights of the departmental reports, which we didn't have since we had a meeting early in the month. We dispatched 459 calls last month. One thing that did come up was, I'm going to say we had some cars that were entered and not broken into because if you don't lock your car, people can enter your car at any time. So please, we're getting to be towards a busy season or a lot of people come off island, make sure you lock your cars even if it's in the driveway. Also, the livability officer issued six warnings and six citations for the month. The fire department, there were... The main thing that the fire department had in the month of April was assisting the Dewey's Island Fire Department and the structure of fire they had up there. Sounded as though things out worked as well as they could under the circumstances that they had. They had a good plan and other departments were able to provide good assistance. And I would also like to say that on Wednesday, June 13th, the Sullivan's Island, Isle of Palms Disaster Expo will be held at the Public Safety Building. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, June 12th. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, unless there are any questions.
Any questions for public safety? None heard. Public Works, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Committee was held on May 7th, my boy's birthday, 13th birthday. I was absent and I was actually working. And so Councilman Loftus was vice chair and handled the meeting. Under citizens' comments, we had Stuart Coleman of Tin Live Oak Drive attended and was questioning about the city's drainage project in that area of the island. We discussed and expressed to him that we're in the early stages of this project and the storm sewer infrastructure that'll extend from 42nd up to 52nd Avenue. And any work that he sees going on at the time is just surveying. Under the departmental reports, director gave his maintenance reports and trash collector reports and basically stated that the emphasis in April had been with beach sweeps and general right-of-way maintenance and noticed that the tonnage of miscellaneous garbage was high basically because everybody's doing the spring cleaning throughout the island. And the garbage consumption was up this month compared to the same month in past years and debris was lower comparison. They had a review of the FY 13 budgets. There was some discussion of the dune walkover that had been reduced but then had been, in Ways and Means, had been eliminated. There's also discussion during that meeting of a cannonball that was retrieved during the dredging project. And I believe that's going to be moved to Wild Dunes to restore. We had consideration of CTC funding as was discussed by Councilman Telly to seek funding from Charleston County for construction projects. The priorities from the Public Works was for the CTC drainage project from 42nd to 52nd. And a second priority is the island-long bike path. Under miscellaneous business, this is a great announcement, idea that we're going to start utilizing single-stream recycling throughout the island. But it'll start between Breach Inlet and 30th Avenue and then we'll extend from there. So that'll start in June. And so those folks from Breach Inlet up to 30th Avenue will be able to recycle in a single stream, put all your stuff in one bucket. And those will be dispersed out to the residents. Also, the administrator went on to talk about there'd be some temporary fencing that'll be coming down over at the old structure across the street. And we're going to open up, make the old palm, the old oak tree visible from the road. There was no other business. The next meeting is June 14th, 5 o'clock. Any questions?
Let's talk about the single-stream recycling. The county's going to come over and drop off all of the containers?
The county's going to...
Subcontract.
A subcontract. At every property that is currently of record or just at every property?
At every single family residence.
Just leave one at the door or at the curb or wherever.
Will they be ticketed if not moved back in?
Well, we're eventually going to have to deal with that because, maybe not the first week. I mean, we're going to give them a little grace. But thereafter, we get a 55-gallon drum, I think it's 55-gallon, but like that, sitting out there, almost like the ones we have in our own trash. Michael?
I just, you know, from an education standpoint, we need to let the residents know because this is a big change. I mean, because almost everything you have in your house that's not garbage can be put in a single-stream container. So what, you know, we as a city and also we need to get information from the county where we can disperse that information to residents ahead of time because this is a big change rather than separating the cans from the newspapers excepting the cardboard. Everything goes in there.
And I think through our website, in discussion with Lynn Gion already, I talked to him earlier about that, doing an article in the newspaper, The Island Eye, about how the single-stream recycling works. Not yet known.
Is Sullivan's going at the same time we are or are we unique?
No, no. We're the first barrier island.
Okay, that's good bad, I mean.
It'll be all good.
All right. All I can think of is a few hundred things that are likely to go wrong, but we let them go wrong and then we fix them, I guess. People are away and they leave them out there for two weeks, don't know what's coming. What do they do with the old containers? I'm looking at Donnie back here as if it's his problem, but it's not your problem.
Yes, Charleston.
Are they going to pick them up later or who knows?
It's yet to be determined.
Yeah, all right.
Are they recyclable?
They are.
I'm going to store my Christmas tree lights in mine.
Okay, well, thanks.
Yep, that's something the city's been pushing for for some time.
Yeah, I know.
This is a great thing.
I think it's good for the county, it's good for the citizens, it's good for the environment. I mean, there's nothing bad about it, it's just getting it done in the middle of summer. Ooh, okay. Recreation Committee, please. Barb's not here? Jimmy, you?
I'm not the vice chair.
Who's the vice chair?
I'm the vice chair, but I apologize, I didn't realize Barb was not going to be here so I'm not really prepared at this point.
Well, I'll work on the premise that everybody has read the minutes. I didn't have any questions. It seemed like the rec is continuing to bubble along. Any questions for the Recreation Committee? None present? Okay, let's move on. Personnel Committee.
Okay, personnel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Personnel Committee met Tuesday, May 1st at 9:00 a.m. Attending a meeting were Councilmen Battelli, Stone, and Chair Thomas, Administrator Tucker, Assistant Administrator Zubin, and the City Clerk Copeland. Previous meeting was... The previous meeting were approved unanimously. There were no citizens' comments. There was a discussion on the budget. Administrator Tucker stated that it would be the last opportunity for the committee to recommend changes to the budget scheduled for the final review on Tuesday, May 15th. Administrator referenced the inclusion of $1,500 for a float in the Mount Pleasant Christmas Parade and had been brought up at the April City Council meeting. Councilmembers Battelli, Stone, and Thomas all felt that this would be a good publicity for the city and show good neighbor. It was also understood that the float would be a lot of work and we decided at that point we would leave that up to the council to decide whether we used that money or not. Councilman Stone commented that he would like to see more money available to improve the parking area at 1207 Palm Boulevard and the property at 1301 Palm Boulevard. He expressed his appreciation for the hard work the staff has put into the budget and thought it was a good budget. There was no new business. The consensus of the committee at the June meeting was not needed and the next meeting then will be at 10:30 a.m., Monday, July 9th, in the conference room. The meeting was adjourned at 9:22 a.m. The April safety sweepstakes winners are General Government Emily DeZubin, Public Works Joseph Washington, Police Department Chris Quinn, Fire Department Juan Hayward.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Personnel? Let's move on to Real Property, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Real Property met on May 8th. All members of the committee were present. The committee also had final recommendations for the 2012-13 budget. Extensive conversation about the cannonball from the Revolutionary War that came up during the beach restoration. Currently, the U.S. Parks Department is taking care of the cannonball for us and they want to give it back to the city. So was referred to, based on the committee, was referred to Ways and Means where a decision was made to find ways to finance that it's... The ball needs to be refurbished and stored in, I believe, a climate-controlled atmosphere. So it's fairly complicated. It's kind of a cool thing to have that, but we're hoping that some group or benefactor will come forward and support preserving this piece of history for the island. Okay? Next item was a discussion of the city parking lot lease. The lease, current lease expires on September 30th, 2012. And after discussion and looking at several options, it was decided to put the lease out for a RFP. And so the city's putting together a bid process for that. One thing that has been discussed on several meetings now has been finding ways to possibly utilize and drive revenue from the parking lot off-season. Example, boat storage or possibly RV parking. Also in discussion was pilings of the marina. During the dredging project, we had to remove several pilings in order for the dredger, dredging company to do an effective job and really get down to where we have the contract. Those pilings were stored in McLeanville and the vendor basically wants to said, okay, it's either, you know, we'll pay you to bring it back, pay us to bring it back, or start paying storage. Since we don't have any immediate need or a place to store them, it was decided by the committee to donate the pilings to the Cape Main Refuge Area, which are the building and new dock. We also continued discussion on parking. We discussed partial opening on Ocean and eliminating parking on Carolina and Charleston. I think the, you know, 200-pound gorilla in the corner is the South Carolina Department of Transportation, what they will allow or not allow the city to do. So we're going back and forth and counting on legal opinion with that. One other option we're talking about is possibly creating excess parking at the city-owned property adjacent to the post office lot. So we're going to be reviewing that and talking about that at the next committee. We had a special request for a private event at the marina. What this was, it would be a private group which would take over the marina for an event. And it was decided that because residents would not be able to participate in this event, that we decided it was not appropriate for city property to do that. So we declined to move forward with that. We also talked about the jet dock that was used for the old boat used by the fire department. That boat, that dock does not work for the new boat we just put in service this year. So basically, we're going to put that jet dock up for salvage and it's in great condition so it's a good deal for somebody. Next meeting is set for July 10th at 5:00 p.m.
Okay. Very good. Any questions on Real Property? Very good. Let's move on. Standing Fords and Commissions, the only one that had a meeting with the commission, you have the minutes in your packet. Any questions, concerns for them? Moving on. Bill's already in possession of council. We're now at the point of second reading of ordinance 2012-01, an ordinance to raise the revenue and adopt a budget, City of Isle of Palms for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012 and ending June 30th, 2013. Want to read the ordinance?
Whereas subsection 3 of section 5-7-260 of the South Carolina Code of Laws 1976, as amended, requires that a municipal council shall act by ordinance to levy taxes and adopt a budget pursuant to public notice. Now therefore be it ordained by the mayor and city council of the City of Isle of Palms, South Carolina, and council duly assembled, that the following provisions are hereby adopted and enacted. Section 1, the prepared budget and estimated revenue for the payment of the same is hereby adopted and made part hereof as if fully incorporated herein, and a copy thereof dated May 22nd, 2012 is attached here too. Section 2, the city administrator shall administer the budget and may authorize the transfer of appropriated funds with... transfer of appropriated funds within departments as necessary to achieve the goals of the budget as established by city council. Section 3, if for any reason any sentence, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be declared invalid, such shall not affect the remaining portions thereof. Section 4, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its ratification by city council, passed, approved, and adopted by the mayor and city council of the City of Isle of Palms on the 22nd day of May 2012. Richard F. Cronin, Mayor.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve second reading ordinance 2012-1?
Still move.
Motion seconded?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Two noes. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on. You have bills, new bills in your possession. There it is. I'd like to introduce first reading by title only of ordinance 2012-2, an ordinance for the release by quick claim deed of the City of Isle of Palms interest in the property identified as Casino Avenue and 8th Avenue to the Beach Company. I'll make that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Two noes.
Please. Nay.
That's a good three.
Two.
Does it, okay.
All right. All right, motion passes. We move from first reading to second reading thereafter. We'll discuss it then. Now we're up to proclamation in support of National Beach Safety Week. How's your voice?
It's fine.
All right, let's have it.
Okay. Whereas the beautiful coastal and inland beaches of Charleston represent a world of renowned recreational resources, and whereas Charlestonians and visitors alike are drawn to these beaches by the millions each year for water and beach activities, and whereas the aquatic environment has dangers that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards, and whereas for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate at the commencement of the busy beach season, and whereas Charlestonians and visitors alike must remember to never swim alone, never drink alcohol before swimming, respect the power of the surf, and learn to swim. Therefore, I Dick Cronin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Isle of Palms, hereby proclaim May 21st through 28th, 2012, as National Beach Safety Week in the Isle of Palms, in the City of Isle of Palms, and urge all residents using our beaches to enjoy themselves at the beach this year while taking appropriate measures to protect themselves and their children, and furthermore expresses support for community swim teams in their missions to foster a love and respect for our water resources through swimming skills.
Have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Still move.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Hopefully, everybody's a swimmer here. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're into National Beach Safety Week. All right, let's move on to miscellaneous business. We have for consideration CTC funding requests for FY13. As you saw through the minutes of the various committees, both Public Safety and Public Works both had identified the 42nd to 52nd Avenue drainage as their primary number-one priority. Had different twos, basically, but what I'd like to propose is that we proceed and approve the 42nd to 52nd Avenue as the first priority, and combine the two recommendations from the other committees. The two recommendations had to do with using a bike path, a length of the island from Public Works, and the multi-use path at the end of the connector being constructed. I'd like to propose that we just construct a number-two priority being a multi-use path at the end of connector and a bike path, full length of the island. Just put them both together. Frankly, we're not going to get it funded. If we get money on one, we'll be happy, but I'd like to at least go on record and just keep the record showing that we're moving forward in interest in how with putting bikes in them. For any reason, either CTC or somebody else can come up with some monies, we have some, we can take these in bite-sized pieces, whatever being the end of the connector, off multi-use path, offshoot. So, I'll make that as a motion. Any second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have the, you were handed just before we started some information on South Carolina electric and gas easement. I know you haven't had a chance to read it. I haven't read it. It is for a future time, but that future time needs to be doctored. South Carolina electric and gas frankly is a hidden eight ball in timing, and they were hoping that we could get the second reading on this by June. In order to do that, at our council meeting in June, we would have to have first reading sometime prior to that. And I'm proposing we just conduct a special council meeting for the sole purpose of consideration of South Carolina electric and gas easement. And I would propose to do it, let's say, just after, Lynn's got her calendar out here, let's say on the 12th, right after the Public Safety Committee meeting, which is at 5:00. So, we'll have a meeting at 6:00 for whatever time it takes to approve the easement.
What date?
That is the 12th.
Tuesday, 12th.
Tuesday, 12th at 6:00 p.m.
If it'd be just for first reading, we'd have second reading at that council meeting.
26th.
Mayor, can't we just have the first reading at Ways and Means?
No, we need to have more time.
We need more than a week?
There's a rule for seven days between reading of ordinances, and so if we wait to the Ways and Means meeting, we won't have the required number of days between readings. So, for that reason, it needs to be...
Yeah, you're right. It's absolutely seven days, but we have to advertise it. We have to put it up on the website, and that wouldn't be coincidental.
Real, real quick, there are two easements. I have actually three forms. I think one is a copy of the...
I don't, I'm thinking, somehow I don't have all three.
Are there, there are only two, correct?
No, there should be.
There are three.
In my packet right here, I have two of 15, I'm sorry, I have 16, but we should have 16, 17, and 120.
Okay, I have 16 and 17, I did not have 120.
That everybody's got it, so I'll get those, I'll email them to you, they'll know.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Well, I guess, does the 12th work at, let's say, 6:00 for a brief session?
First reading by title only.
I mean, it should take about two and a half minutes.
I can be out of town, but...
Well, as long as we...
As I say, I'm...
Okay. All right, so, lacking any concern, we'll schedule that for 6:00 on the 12th, if you can mark your calendars appropriately, and then we can, we can get on with that activity and get them going. That'll be good news. We have, information I think has been passed to you, and we should pass to the rest of the citizens on the island, that we're going to have resurfacing scheduled sometime later this year through the county resurfacing effort, avenues 5 through 13, Charleston, Hartnett, and Oak Harbor are all scheduled as presently, they're, I think they're bidding it now, aren't they? So, when they get around to doing the actual work, all of those roads should have a new surface on them when we're done. So, that's again, good news for the citizens on the island, and doesn't increase the speed limit, just because they might have a better road, by the way. Just in case, you need to know. I want to reemphasize the point that Marty made earlier, is that we are on the 13th of June going to have an expo, disaster recovery expo, disaster preparedness expo. We're going to do it in joint with Sullivan's Island again at our Public Safety Building. We're trying to make it a fun event, bring the kids, bring the pets, bring anybody you can, get information to protect yourselves. If your neighbors aren't going to be around, please ask them if you can get the information for them, ensure with your neighbors it's so very important that we're prepared. People have asked, do we prepare based on the number, the forecast of what these pundits say, how many storms are, you know, storms are going to be down this year, or storm, name storms are going to be up this year? I said, it doesn't matter. All it takes is one. So, we prepare every year the same way, with due diligence in every department throughout the city, and we ask the citizens to do the same thing, because it only takes one for us to be slammed, and it's something we don't want to see again, so. All right, you're duly notified, and hopefully we'll see you there on the 13th. It's not anybody's birthday, is it? All right, no other business prop before council, we'll adjourn if I have a motion. Move to adjourn.
I talked to the city administrator about this earlier, to keep it for the record, is the last council meeting, I talked about the GC3 district.
Correct.
If you can just brief everybody on that.
GC3, we had talked in terms of having it on for first reading for this meeting. The change that was being discussed was outdoor seating in the GC3 area, and I think that as a staff, we felt that that had just been inadvertently overlooked when we formed the GC3 area. And so, for the next council meeting, you will have on for first reading an ordinance change to allow for outdoor seating in the GC3 area. And then, before second reading, you will need to go back for the information, and then we'll come back to council for second reading. And for those businesses that are interested in doing that, they will still have to go through the process with the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Any other concerns?
Nothing in terms of...
Motion to adjourn? Any second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, we're out of here.
Good job.
And the sun is still up.
I need to break on my wall.
A storm just... Okay, so I was writing that note to you, because I keep forgetting to ask you.